You have Tucson versus Pongrants LLC at all, Pima County Superior Court, case number C 2020-2928, and is being held pursuant to ARS Section 38-43103a, 3a, 4, and 7.
May I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Your Honor, are we supposed to take a roll? No, that's tonight.
No, that's later on tonight. So there's a motion. Did I hear a second? There's a motion in a second. Any discussion before we head into executive session? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We're going on to executive session.
We need a motion to return to study session.
So moved.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. What is the council's pleasure for item two?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item three. Time has been set aside for an update on the COVID-19 mitigation measures, funding and appropriations, and related legal matters. Mr. Manager?
Mayor, members of the council, do not have any update from the last meeting on that topic. Still monitoring cases. As you know, we did change our mask requirement to recommended. And so we're just continuing to monitor the cases and we will continue to do that and modify whatever administrative directives might be appropriate going forward. Happy to answer questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega. Mr. Rankin, did you want to give us an update on any legal issues?
Order that required masks to be worn on public transit, including airlines, but also buses. And in that decision, the federal district court judge had struck down that mask mandate. And we didn't know at that time, at the time of our last meeting on the 19th, whether the Department of Justice would appeal that ruling up to the Federal Court of Appeals. The DOJ did in fact file a notice of appeal following additional action by the CDC. So the CDC issued a further statement finding that, and it is the CDC's position, that the mask requirement on public transit is still a reasonably necessary measure to mitigate concerns for public health and safety. And so based on that, the DOJ has filed a notice of appeal. However, in doing so, the DOJ has not requested any interim relief. So in other words, the court order stays in place while the appeal gets litigated, meaning that the prior order of the CDC requiring the masks wearing on public transit is not currently enforceable. So as states and that litigation get set, I'll keep you informed and we will keep an eye on it.
Did the CDC through the DOJ file notice to appeal so that they could practice in the future if they needed to call for a mask mandate?
Mayor, members of the council, yes, I think really the significance of the appeal is that the CDC recognizes that not only this particular order about masks on public transit at this particular time, but it's also just more generally about the authority of the CDC to issue orders that are necessary for public health during the course of a pandemic, such as the one that we continue to experience.
Alrighty. What I wanted to call attention to is that vaccinations are still being given for free at Pima County Health Department sites, that a second booster for people over 50 is available and good to consider, especially if you're immunodeficient. And of course, we know the ways to stay safe. COVID is still happening and you can still get sick. So please make sure that we all remain vigilant and that you continue following as many protocols as you can with COVID. So with that, any of my colleagues want to add any comments or questions? Hearing none, we move on to item four. Time has been set aside for the submission of the city manager's recommended fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget, including the capital improvement program. Mr. Manager? And Mr. Manager, I just wanted to clarify that the submission of your budget is for discussion, questions, comments, input from the mayor and council, but you, we are not expected to take any action on this today, correct?
That's correct, Mayor. No action today.
Alrighty, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I appreciate this. It's nice to be back in person, number one. And number two, my favorite topic of the year is the budget. And so what an opportunity to share this time with you. So wanted to call your attention to a few things. One, I did provide a memorandum to you. I know it was lengthy. It was several pages, but I tried to encapsulate the essence of the budget, really talking through things that I saw as either important to you, things that you'd mentioned over the year, as well as things that I thought should be brought to light. Overall, I will tell you that we are in a very solid position financially. It's a structurally balanced budget. I do want to emphasize that it's a function of decisions that were made by this body many, many years ago, both in terms of establishing our reserves as well as decisions that helped us to get into this position. So congratulations to you for that. Having said that, I don't want to give you the impression that we are rolling in dough or rolling in cash because that would be inaccurate. I think having a structurally balanced budget and making sure we address the various needs that we have is the key here. And so we'll get started. I won't go through the memo. I think the memo is pretty self-explanatory, but I've got the team here and we can answer whatever questions might come up. So we can go to the slides now? That's okay? So the first order of business, I think, is to go back and talk a little bit about what financial stability means. Basically, a structurally balanced budget means new revenues exceed or meet or exceed ongoing expenses. So I think that's an important piece to keep in the back of your mind. Throughout the budget, I have made recommendations with regard to one-time expenses. And one of the reasons for that is to draw attention to it, but also suggest to you it gives you flexibility in future years. Should something happen during the year that causes us to scale back for '24, it gives us the opportunity to do that and gives you some flexibility there. Does not mean that a one-time expense won't be reoccurring, but that's a conscious decision that you can then make during the year. I wanted to just take a quick minute and in the materials, you'll see we did include some information about our staffing model. If you remember, there was a lot of concern last year in September through December about the staffing models that we had or staffing levels that we had. So we went through a fair amount of energy and effort to reduce vacancies, went through a variety of energy and effort to hire consultants and contracts and a variety of things to help us with those vacancies. I will tell you that we're normalizing somewhere around 10% to 12% for an organization of our size. That's about 11% on average, so we're right in that ballpark. Doesn't make it any easier because that means we still have some vacancies throughout. So turnover continues to be a focal point for me, for us as a team. We'll continue to bring ideas and thoughts to you. The key piece is the future employee. The conversation around what does the future work environment look like continues to be, you know, very hot and pressing for us as an organization. I've also provided some thoughts for you to consider on our fund balance. I think that the fund balance is in a good spot. And there's an opportunity to provide that investment in the community. I've given you a variety of different thoughts there. That is where you'll see I've built in dollars for the Prop 411 commitments, and I'll talk about that in a minute. As far as enhancement of services and expansion, it sounds like they're new. They're actually funding those programs and services that you all had voted on or directed me to implement over the course of the last two years. Some of those have been slower to come about, but we're ready to move. And I think that with the investment that we're planning to make, you're going to see some good movement and very quickly on that. And then ARPA, I just wanted to point out that ARPA is still in the wings, not only in terms of the existing dollars we have, but we are waiting patiently for news on our next tranche of funding. Next slide, please. Oop, I guess we should have been on those. I guess I should tell you next slide or somebody next slide. So I'm on the third slide now. So enhancements, there we go. So there were, these are topics and programs you've heard before. I won't go into a lot of detail, just to give you a quick update. The Community Health Safety and Wellness Program, we are on track to hire 14 individuals for that. There's eight that we used to call the social workers. If you remember those conversations that happened, I think, Mayor, in January 20 was when that discussion happened. So we're on track to move that forward and we'll continue to provide you updates. I know you were recently given that update in a previous study session. Housing and homelessness, again, a big piece of that is the Housing First Program, but also how we implement and expend the ARPA dollars that have been allocated to that, which is part of this budget in terms of the expense side, both in terms of the Housing First Director and the opportunity to expend those dollars. Public safety, as you know, we have now referred to public safety as communications, fire and police. Traditionally, we used to just call public safety as fire and police, but we've included and expanded communications. I'll talk more about their efforts here in a minute when we talk about the Prop 411 opportunities there. Equity, I'm very pleased to report again that we've hired Larisse Walker as our equity officer. Very excited and bringing some great perspective for the entirety of our organization. And I'm looking forward to that continued investment and continued perspective. With regard to code enforcement, you'll see in the investment plan, I've allocated about $2.5 million for, I think we called it code enforcement and beautification. It's all-inclusive, right? To address some of the challenges we have, we're expanding our vans program, et cetera. Next slide, please. As you saw in the materials, our revenues are up in the general fund by about $84 million. That's very significant. And we'll talk a little bit more about the detail, but I want you to think about the fact that in the good old days, you know, we were worried about potential shortfalls of $30 to $50 million, and now we're on the other side of that. My concern, quite frankly, and you'll hear me emphasize this, is the sustainability of that. I think we have to be very careful, very cautious, goes back to that one-time dial that you'll hear me refer to many, many times. So the 34, excuse me, the 37.4 million is exactly that. So part of that is one-time investments. We'll outline those for you. Make sure that you're clear on where those dials can really be turned going forward and into the future. I did mention to you already about ARPA. Just to refresh your memory, that's $136 million. We do not have all of that. We've only gotten half of that and we're still patiently waiting for that second tranche to come in. Next slide, please. It's already mentioned that of the base budget or, excuse me, the structural balance, so I won't go over that again. As I mentioned to you before in study sessions, as we're talking about the budget, the base budget was really intended to be the same for '22 to '23 with escalators, with improvements or costs for contracts, things that we don't control, they're outside of our control, or quite frankly, that are contractually obligated. And so that's what you're looking at or you're seeing and what's proposed. The supplementals, we've actually put aside $45 million, $20 million of which we brought back to you for consideration as a part of the supplemental process. And just to refresh your memory, the thought there is to take $10 million of one-time money. So basically, even though we have those revenues, I'm recommending that we allocate $10 million for one-time expenses and we'll have conversation around those. And then $10 million will be for operational or ongoing costs that we can talk through when the supplementals occur. Refreshing your memory on the schedule for that, the departments are already preparing their supplemental requests. We're working with the staff to identify what those look like going forward. Those will be presented to you starting in, I'm figuring, late July, maybe August, probably the first meeting in August. My goal is to have those supplementals in place and approved by you, or at least considered by you, before October 1. So the idea is to really try to get those in place by then. I already mentioned the investment plan. I think we'll continue down the path. And keep in mind that the investment plan is a five-year look. I'll talk about that in a minute. But the option that you have is you can turn dials every year. So as this is just a framework, every year you'll have the opportunity to weigh in. And if there's something that needs to change, we can certainly tweak it as we move forward. So it provides you with that flexibility. Last thing I'll mention on this particular slide is the expenditure limit. I am concerned, we are starting to push up against the expenditure limit. Just to refresh your memory on that, that's a statutory, and I'm going to say constitutional, but don't quote me on the exact terminology there. But we are required by law to have an expenditure limit, and that's established by rules that were enacted back in the 1980s. And so what it does is it basically caps how much we can spend unless we go to the voter and have a conversation around that. So during the year, you're going to hear me talk about that and there might be an opportunity for us to go back out and have a discussion because we don't want to be in a position where we have dollars that we can't expend because we're at our expenditure limit. So we'll have that discussion going forward. Next slide, please. So this is the investment plan. I'm sorry for the print to be so small, or maybe, I don't know, small print's kind of fun though. But I think the big piece here is in that second column where it's FY '22. I'm projecting that we'll be in about $158 million surplus, if you will, or fund balance above our policy level. And what I'm suggesting is that it's an inefficient, potentially inefficient use of funds to keep those there, but instead start looking at investing those in our needs as a community. keep those there, but instead start looking at investing those in our needs as a community. And so what I've done is given you a snapshot of what a five-year horizon would look like. So I'll call your attention to the very last column where that drains down, if you will, to about $2.3 million. But in the meantime, that $158 million plus will be put to work. And those are my recommendations. This is where you'll see the public safety component, which is $18 million. So just to refresh your memory, part of Prop 411 is a commitment by you to invest $90 million over five years, which is $18 million a year, and that $18 million is right there in the investment plan. Now, should Prop 411 not pass, then we'll come back and have a conversation with you on where those dollars and how we can allocate those dollars. I'm not suggesting that they would change, but I think that it's a conversation that might be worthy of review at that point. Also, in that first line, collector's streets, that's the amount that's in Prop 411, again, for collectors. This is the general fund contribution. Just to refresh your memory on that, we have $11 million of debt forgiveness that's basically complete, and so we will put those dollars from HERF into collectors, and the $4 million will make up $15 million, which was the direction that you all gave and the commitment that you're making to the voter upfront. You can go down the list there. You can see their investments scattered throughout. I think that ultimately, any of those can change, and any of them can change year to year. So the thought process there is, again, it's a framework. It could be that as time goes on, those numbers will change, or even the categories can change. So as I bring forth the recommendation today, this is my thought, and this is a framework for you to consider going forward. It does not paint you in a corner for years two through five. At some point, you'll have to make a decision with regard to the investment, and then we'll have those conversations going forward. Next slide, please. So getting into some of the granular pieces of this, our local sales tax continues to be strong. I think that it's really, and again, just to refresh your memory in a conversation we had almost a year ago, we had expected a dip during the pandemic. We didn't see that in the same way that we expected. We had thought that it was going to be potentially as high as 15%. We didn't see that. We actually held our own during the pandemic, and now we're seeing growth. And a lot of that is just growth in a variety of different retail sales, so that's a good thing. Again, sustainability is in question, but you know, there's some, there's a lot of volatility. I think that's an important word to make sure people are thinking about as we're looking at what's going forward as we plan our expenditures. The state shared revenues are up very significantly. That's one of the highest numbers that I've seen, at least in my career. And I think that, again, it's great because, you know, it gives us some flexibility, but it also is word of caution to just say, hey, we need to be careful when we're making decisions that have long-term implications with regard to the investments that we're making. Prop 411, as you know, that's a $74 million potential expense. We only included, I mean, only as relevant, $40 million in the current budget because I'm expecting that it'll take us about six months-ish to gather enough dollars to start our program. But keep in mind that it gives us the opportunity to finish up some of the Prop 101 projects. Again, just thinking through it, it's a movement of about a year, you know, from when we start collecting until we start spending, although I projected about six months for that. So that's, again, an opportunity, but I wanted to point out that we do, I did build a budget around an assumption that Prop 411 would pass. Should it not pass, then we'll have a conversation. So property tax included, it's in, it's one of the first items. If you go to the next slide, we can talk through that. You can see, we have seen assessed values go up, and so as a result, you're seeing some increase in property tax as well as, and just to refresh your memory on that, we are capped at how much we can increase property tax by 2%, regardless of assessed value, plus new construction. Because we have seen a fair amount of new construction, we are able to benefit from that, and that's what you see on the screen. I'll point out a couple of things on this spreadsheet. Again, not to get too granular, but just to make sure that you're picking up or seeing it. We've got a $28 million projected increase in our city sales tax. That's about 11%. That's pretty significant. Again, that's big growth. We generally project out between 3% and 4% growth, so that's very significant. We've checked those numbers and double-checked those numbers, both internally as well as with our partners at the state. The League of Cities and JLBC help us with some of the state shared revenues as well. I wanted to point out the state shared sales tax as well as the income tax. Between those two, you're seeing about a $42 million increase. Again, very significant, and we'll take it, right? But I also question the sustainability of that and all the other things that go along with that, hence my caution as we go through this conversation. Last thing I'll mention is if you look at the total for the general fund, we're just shy of 14%. That's a pretty, again, a pretty high number if you take all the numbers that are there. And it does, it's great, right? But there also needs to be some caution there. Next slide, please. On the expenditure side, I already talked about the programs in my first slide, so I won't repeat those. Those are just some pieces that are in there that might be important to you, just things that I know I've heard from you over the year. The reserve from supplementals, as I mentioned, is built in, and we have two components to that. One is one-time, and the other is ongoing. And so when we get to those discussions in latter part of July or early August, we'll talk about what that chemistry can look like. My recommendation is that we set $20 million aside, which is basically the 20, I'm sorry, the 10 for ongoing and 10 for one-time. Already mentioned the staffing model. I will talk now about the compensation. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll just, I'll switch over to the compensation. I know there's basically some question about Item 7E, which is on the consent agenda. It's the compensation plan. Please know, and I have Elsa Quijada here who can also help answer some of the questions. The compensation plan discussion is an annual discussion that's required by charter. The conversation there is about the structure of how the comp, our compensation works. It does not necessarily have to do with any adjustments or salary adjustments within the recommendation. So I did in the memo on the compensation plan say that whatever decision is ultimately made on compensation will not affect that structure because that is not a recommendation at this point. I can also tell you that we haven't recommended a change to the comp structure. I know that there's some concern out there that maybe we made some change to it. We did not. It's really about the cost of living or salary adjustments that we've been discussing, which are separate from that, from that discussion, which is 7E this evening. So I had made a recommendation. My recommendation is still to consider a 3% salary adjustment for all employees. That breakdown is 2% across the board for salary adjustments and a 1% across the board to cover health insurance increases. As I've mentioned to you, my thought there is simple, and actually, I went back, and we have been absorbing health insurance costs for about five years, cost increases for employees about five years. And if we had used a similar strategy, those employees that have been around that long would see somewhere between 3% and 5% more in terms of their pensionable salary today than they would, than they are actually saying. So I recommend that. That's a thought. But you also asked me to come up with some other scenarios, and there's three other scenarios. I sent you a memorandum on Friday, and I'll go over those quickly. The first is to have a, an across-the-board amount, dollar amount. And so we ran the math, and all I did was I took the equivalent dollar amount of the 3% and distributed amongst all active employees. Now, keep in mind, this does not include vacant positions, so I really tried to hone in on that to increase the dollar amount for the existing employee. That number comes to $2,013. So everybody, basically, that is an employee of the City of Tucson would get $2,013. Those that are part-time would get a prorated share of that. The second scenario, or Scenario C, is what I'll call the hybrid, which is a 1% adjustment. And again, that goes back to the health insurance conversation that I mentioned earlier, within whatever is left, distributed amongst all employees, so everybody would get the same amount after that. That across-the-board flat rate would be 13,000, excuse me, they're dead, would love to give 13,000. $1,342 would be allocated. So it's 1% plus $1,300 on that. The scenario D, which was the other one that you all had asked me to look at, was what I'll call a tiered system where the lower-paid employees are paid a higher percentage or given a higher percentage, and the higher-paid employees are a lesser percentage. And so I went through and looked at it, again, just based to some level on how we do our health insurance. I picked some tiers. We can monkey with those if we need to. But from 30,000 to 59,000 would be 5%. From 60,000 to 90,000 would be 3%, and then 90 above would be 2%. And you can see how that shakes down the materials. Of all of the recommendations or all of the scenarios, that's the one that I would have to recommend against. The others, you know, I gave you my recommendation, but the others, although caused some compression, Scenario D does cause me concern, and here's why. If we put a level, a tier, and it is a dollar amount, we have salary schedules and salary grades that split those numbers. And so, for example, on the first one, someone who earns $59,999, we'd get 5%. An employee sitting next to them doing the same job but in the same pay scale that earns $60,000 or $60,001 would get 3%. And so that causes us some internal equity issues, in my opinion, and so I would recommend that the council not choose that one. So I provided it there because you asked me to, but I am making a recommendation that you not give me direction on Scenario D. The other three, although, as I mentioned to you before, caused some compression, some issues there, I think they're all doable. And I think the other piece to it is they don't cause as much compression because we went through all the energy and effort of the market analysis. But keep in mind that down the road, if we continue to do this, it will, over time, compress it even more. So no one-year way, if you will, I'm not opposed to that or concerned about those. Very quickly, I did include some materials in your memorandum or in the memorandum on the benefit structure for employees, and part of it is, again, the absorption of a 6.9% increase in health insurance. That is not the full cost. You know, keep in mind that we still do pay, as an employer, about 85% of the total cost. But I also wanted to draw your attention to the student loan repayment program. We've instituted that recently. That has been a huge hit in terms of a recruitment tool. We basically took that as feedback or from some of our directors, as well as from some employees, that said that that was something that's a real burden to them, and so we're really looking hard at how we can offset that. I know that we are very supportive of the federal government's efforts to address some of the student loan challenges that the nation has, but we'll certainly continue to do our part. Fuel continues to be a challenge for us, although we've seen a little downtick in cost there. We are still planning and preparing for an eventual increase, or at least staying at the same level. Just to refresh your memory, about four or five years ago, we established a reserve contingency account that is separate, so we have that set aside for that purpose in case there is an issue with fuel. I think it's important to have that and continue. So some of the increases that you've seen in the ongoing, the ongoing operations cost is a function of fuel, and I already mentioned the health insurance. Next slide, please. So I'll draw your attention to the first four items there. They add up to about 25, well, about 26, almost 27 million. So those are the costs for personnel, and those costs are basically made up by a few things. Number one, the $9 million. And by the way, I apologize, I had told you that the cost of the 3% was in the 8.6 million range. As we went through and scrubbed it from a pension standpoint, we found that we needed to make an adjustment there, so I draw your attention to that increase to $9 million. But the other piece that's important here is, in last year's budget, we didn't account for all of the market increases, and so this does. So this budget will, in fact, have all of the market increases that we have been working on, if you will. What it does not include are additional dollars specifically for future market. So just to remind you on that, I've built in some dollars, and I believe it's about 2.4 million, of what I'm calling ongoing market reviews that we will, may have to do during the year. So for example, if we have a position in IT or in one other area that we obviously are having trouble filling or retaining folks, then we may have to do a spot, we'll call it a spot market analysis. And so I've built in some dollars that are not included here. They're actually part of our contingency plan. The other thing I'll point out to you is under the supplies line, you see about an 8% increase there of $2 million. That's where the fuel, that's where you see the fuel cost coming, and that's really the big driver there in terms of those dollars. With regard to the 5.9 million, which is, let's see, what's that, services, it's about a 20% increase. We are seeing the need for outside vendors, particularly in our general services. You know, keep in mind that as our facilities age, we're needing to bring in additional folks. That is not my preference, quite frankly. What we're really doing is focusing on hiring trades across the board, but I have to have a backup plan if I can't get those folks in the door, and so that's what you're seeing there, as well as some of the IT costs that are associated with operations. I will call your attention to the last line there, transfers out. That's the increase in our transit, transfer, and it really isn't an increase. It shows up this way because we took advantage of grant money last year, and so we have to show it as coming out of the general fund this year. So we saw a decrease last year, we've just seen an increase. So it's not fair to call it an increase to transit in this year like this. It's really more about the dollars running out on our grant. Next item, please. Next slide. Thank you. So I already mentioned to you what the FY '23 budget looks like. That's an increase basically for contractual purposes, but it's pretty much the same, or I'm trying to make it the same as what we had in '22, but giving you flexibility as we talk about supplementals going forward. Again, I already mentioned Prop 411, and I explained how that is built in. Again, if it doesn't pass, then we'll have a conversation around that. I did want to mention Prop 206. We do have that in there that I know was a question down the road. We do have it built in as continuing to enforce and implement. We have been averaging about six calls a week. We'll call them complaints. We actually just got our first official complaint today, so very timely info on that. So we just, we'll be doing a full investigation on that. I just wanted to point that out to you. Next slide, please. As you know, the budget's broken down into general fund and then special revenue and enterprise funds. Very simplistically, general fund is all of the stuff that is, we'll call it not restricted in terms of the way that you approach it, but it requires the charter or gives us an opportunity to invest in the charter-required functions. So special revenues are those that are restricted, such as HERF. Those have restrictions. They're not enterprise funds. You know, they don't pay us, but the money that we get from the state is restricted. And then, of course, enterprise funds are our business models, which are water, environmental services, et cetera. So this is the final year of the Prop 101 collection, so that ceases on June 30 of this year. We will continue down the path of expending those dollars. Just to remind you, 60% of that was for public safety facilities and vehicles, et cetera, and 40% was for roads. You'll see, we actually have, I believe, Station 9. The ribbon cutting on that is May 26. So you're going to see a lot of movement on these as they start to finish up. I know Station 8 is moving very rapidly, and Stations 15 and 18 are under construction now, so we're moving that very quickly. The piece that's important there is the roads, and so we've got those packages ready to go this summer, and you'll see a lot of movement there. Now, one thing that's important is initially, we were projecting some surplus, excess revenue in Prop 101 or from Prop 101, and so we got pretty excited about that. We still feel optimistic about that. However, we're not quite as optimistic as we were simply because of the increase in construction costs. And so we have cautioned everybody to say, let's make sure we deliver what was promised to voters, which we're absolutely convinced we can do. And then down the road, if there are some dollars left over, then we'll rethink how we can expend those dollars on the voter-authorized topics or needs. Prop 407, I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about that, and I may have confused the issue last time, and I apologize. I've mentioned that we are seeing about a $20 million increase in state shared revenue, and what I suggested is that those dollars should is that those dollars should go towards Prop four-oh-seven, and that may have implied that we can't deliver Prop four-oh-seven. That is absolutely not true. We are on track to deliver Prop four-oh-seven, but my thought was this, those additional dollars from the state could help us offset some of the increases in cost, but also look at the opportunity to accelerate some of those projects. So if you remember, one of the criticisms that was given us early on was the fact that it was a nine-year program, and so people were scratching their heads saying, you know, I'll be out of high school by the time these programs or these projects are actually built. So my whole thought there is to really look at and analyze that program, and if there's opportunity for us to accelerate that, we did get an opinion from the attorney early on that we could expend those dollars upfront, and then we can get reimbursed basically by those tax revenues in the future. So that was my intent there, just to make sure I reinforce to you that, you know, there was never a question about delivery of Prop four-oh-seven. I just wanted to make sure that you understood what my thoughts were there. So we are resuming pre-pandemic investments in the mass transit, the zoo, the TCC. We talked a little bit about that last time. I want to make sure that I did point that out to you. Park Tucson is still recovering. I'm expecting that this next year is going to be a little bit of a challenge for us in Park Tucson. I'm not concerned about that, but it definitely has seen a hit from the pandemic, and we'll continue to watch it and as we need to, we'll bring back recommendations to you for consideration. We are going to look at our RES on a macro scale. I know there's a lot of interest there, so we're going to continue looking at that. I also wanted to just let you know, we have seen a very significant increase in our CAP costs, and so we're going to be having a conversation around that and pushing back as much as we possibly can on that. Next slide, please. So Mayor, members of the council, you know, I think, and I went through it fairly quickly, and I don't mean to do it too quick. Obviously, I want to spend as much time as you think is needed or appropriate. I think that the process thus far has been a good one. I think that as we go forward, just to remind you, so I will ask that you consider the tentative budget adoption at the next meeting, which is May nineteenth, and then final budget adoption or consideration, I believe it's on June seventh. And so that's the process. So as we go through and you have conversation, keep in mind that the cap is what's important. If you want to talk about, you know, how those are configured, we can do that, and you can do that even up to and potentially even after the budget is adopted. The important piece there is to make sure that you're comfortable with the overall expenditures and how the assumptions for revenue translate into expenditures and dealing with the services that we're required to provide. So Mayor, with that, I'd be happy to answer questions. I have the entire crew here, so between us, we'll try to muddle our way through it.
So before we start with the questions, and I do want to remind everyone that Council Member Fimbres is doing the meeting virtually, so because I cannot see if he has his hand up or not, I'm usually going to start over there, just to give him the benefit since he's not here. First and most importantly, thank you so much, Mr. Ortega, for submitting your budget, for being so careful, and for guiding us, I would say, for the last, what, how many years have you been with us? Seven? For the last seven years, to get us to the point where we are so financially healthy. And you give us a lot of kudos. You give us, Mayor and council, a lot of kudos, and I have to return the commentary to you and your team for doing all of the legwork to keep us in a healthy place and to be able to have, for the second year in a row, a good discussion in terms of compensation for our city employees. Saying that, we also have to be very conscious as mayor and council and as a team that the economy could possibly get volatile because of what's happening in the world, right? Because of fuel costs, because there is a war happening in Ukraine, and the majority of Europe is being affected, as well as the United States because of rising fuel costs. And so we've got to be as careful and fiscally responsible as we possibly can. As we see into the next three, four years, we have to be as careful as possible. Saying that, I am very happy with the investment plan that you've put in front of us because it retains the commitment that we did for public safety, which is communications, fire and police. It's investing eighteen million dollars a year, making sure that in the next five years, ninety million dollars is going to the needs of public safety. And it contributes from the general fund, four million dollars for arterial, not arterial, for collector's streets, and that's a commitment of fifteen million dollars a year for the next five years that Mayor and council has put on the table and has committed to if Prop four-eleven passes. And that is very important if, because then we'll have to come back to the table if Prop four-eleven does not pass and have a very, very different type of conversation regarding those investments, both in our streets and for public safety. So I'm going to open up for my colleagues on the council to comment and ask questions and give their opinion. This is the time to do that. We've given enough time, we've scheduled enough time for this item to make sure that we all exhaustively ask questions or give feedback and advice to the city manager and the team. Saying that, I'm going to open up the opportunity for Council Member Fimbres. Council Member Fimbres, I don't know if your hand is out, but if you'd like to ask questions or make your commentary, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mike, I've been aware that the labor groups will present the compensation plan yesterday. May second, grid has been raised about the compensation plan and the scenarios presented in the Mayor Manager's memorandum dated January, April twenty-ninth. Labor groups have worked with the city of Tucson to deal with salary compression, healthcare costs, contractual agreements, and they have to have them on a step system for what's there indicated the compensation plan, and then August twenty ninth, we would throw it off. May tenth, the mayor is having a statutory requirement hearing to listen to decide his groups to the city employees. So it's been agendaized on May nineteenth, study session for discussion. How does a statutory requirement hearing the mayor has to have scheduled for May tenth enter into discussion of mayor and council needs, vote on seventy today?
Mayor, Council Member Fimbres, can you hear me okay, sir?
I can hear you now. Thank you, Mike.
Okay, you're welcome. So first and foremost, Council Member, the public hearing that the mayor holds, I believe, is May tenth, is intended to hear commentary from the employees on the compensation plan, which is the structure of the plan. The employees are able to comment on whatever is of interest to them with regard to compensation, but it isn't necessarily about that by itself. And also, the compensation plan and structure has not changed. So what we're talking about with the three percent allocation is related but separate from that. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, because no decision is to be made today on this presentation, it's really an opportunity to provide feedback. One component of that can be to solicit feedback from the labor groups on the scenarios that are presented to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike, I also want to compliment you on the budget. Like, I came in in oh-nine, and it was Steve Kay and I, and I tell you, it was, we were in a deficit. We were tough. We were looking for ways to provide, keep programs running to protect our most vulnerable citizens, and you've helped us do that. So thank you.
You're welcome.
So I got it, Madam Mayor. Good night, all.
Thank you, Council Member. I do see Council Member Kozatycz's hand up, as well as Council Member Cunningham, and then the Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I've got a couple of questions and then a few comments. The first comment is, thank you to all your team for the hard work that y'all have put in. I know doing this remotely has been a challenge. We've shared dozens of emails, and it's nice to see you in something other than a little circle on a screen with a head in it. Before I go though, Mike, you stood up during Richard's comments. Did you want to interject something before I go?
I'm sorry?
Oh.
And reinforce that, yes, seven E is on the consent agenda tonight with respect to the comp plan, but that is just in order to get the manager's recommended compensation plan that's put forward by the HR Director out there, and it sets the stage for the dispute hearing that Council Member Fimbres was referencing that has been scheduled. But the actual action on the adoption of the comp plan is not to occur on tonight's agenda, but comes back in June and can be informed by all the comments that come through during the hearing and that are brought forward as mentioned by Council Member Fimbres. That's all I had to add. Thank you.
Didn't want you to feel ignored. First question for Mike Ortega in this case. Can you spend a second talking a little bit more about that expenditure cap, how close we are, what the urgency is, and maybe what options we ought to be considering in terms of taking that back to the voters?
Sure. So we are scrubbing that very closely. We have concerns. We received word from the state that our RTA expenses are to be included in that expenditure limit. We are fighting that because that doesn't make sense to us that we would be charged, if you will, against our limit for expenses that we are putting forth on behalf of another agency. That's about seventy million dollars, almost seventy-six million dollars, and so that pushes us right at the cap, if not above. We do have other options, though, and what we will look at is, depending on what the outcome of that may be, we'll look at deferring expenses that we have built in for contingencies. And so remember that it's the cap that's of importance there, and so the discussions that we've been having internally is, how can we demonstrate that the limit will be under the limit? So there's two ways to do that. One is to defer expenses, right, particularly on contingencies, but the other is to show debt, debt service as a part of it. Obviously, you know where I am with debt in terms of going forward. However, from a reporting standpoint, we will do that. Now, keep in mind that it's the entirety of the budget, which we don't expend on an annual basis, but we're well within. We're probably going to be less than fifty million dollars, which sounds like a lot of money, but, you know, we spend about seventeen million dollars every two weeks on payroll, just to give you an idea of magnitude. So we're pushing up against pretty hard. We're going to need to have discussions. So there's a couple of things to do. We can go for a one-time. All of these require voter authorization. We can go for one time, or we can go for a permanent base adjustment. I think that that's a conversation we can have down the road based on the confidence that you have in the way we've approached budgeting and expenses going forward. So there's some options, and as we have a little more information on that, I'll bring that back to you with some recommendations on how to address it.
Okay, all right. Thanks. And I assume if we're going to go to the voters this year, we would have a drop dead date that we'd need to make that call. I mean, I know that. So maybe some information as to when we need to fish a cut.
July one.
July one, all right, good. So a couple of comments. You know, we've had the luxury of two years of some pretty significant federal dollars, and that's done. And our decisions, I'm agreeing with the mayor's opening comments, our decisions need to recognize that. With respect to staffing levels, we all see gaps departmentally in probably every department in the city, in our staffing levels that need filling. However, adding more people to a broken process is not a solution. And every department, my office included, need to be challenged to take a deep dive into our assumptions on the why of how we're doing things, our operating processes. All of us can improve them, and once those processes are made more efficient, it will necessarily affect our perception of staffing shortfalls. So I just wanted to make that statement. We're going through it in our office, and every department in the city can afford that, to do that. With respect to sales tax projections, I agree with the comment that the city manager made, that the eight percent growth rate is an anomaly, and our projections going forward need to be based more on something like the three percent history that we've recognized in the past. Mike, what kinds of, I'm going to jump into a couple of the kind of line items in your budget. What kinds of things are being considered for supplemental requests, and how do we weigh in on that?
Sure. Mayor, Councilman Kozatycz. So the ongoing supplementals will be things like programs. I need more people. We're going to stand up a particular area, or we're short. You know, we're way behind the eight ball on certain processing of, pick it. And that's what you're going to see. You'll also see things like, you know, computer equipment, things that have an ongoing cost. That's what I'm expecting to see come forward. Each of the departments will be asked to present both ongoing as well as one-time so that you can kind of see the difference, and it'll vary. In some areas, it's going to be more heavily weighted towards the personnel side or the ongoing side, and other areas it's going to be highly capital intensive, so it's one-time. The piece that I'll caution on, though, is on the one-time, particularly when we talk about technology, we have to think about the ongoing costs of that, but also the life cycle of that. So that's a piece that you'll see as we go through these discussions.
And from a process standpoint, when are we to weigh in on that? And is that the ten and ten for after the budget's approved?
Yeah. Mayor, Councilman Kozatycz. So my expectation is that the directors are actually having those conversations in the very near term with staff that's sitting here to my left and my right. By the way, I didn't remind everyone that this is Anna Rosenberry, our CFO, and welcoming her through the budget process has been exciting for us, anyway. So the expectation, though, Council Member, is for the departments to submit their recommendations or their requests. We'll vet them, we'll go through them, challenge them on cost assumptions, those kinds of things. That'll take us about two months to do, which is kind of the normal timeframe. Then you'll start to see more information on that either in late July or early August is my intent, so that when we're looking at the August, whatever the date is for the first August meeting, you'll actually have a presentation, at least snippets of that going forward. And then we'll probably have an item on each study session through October for review by department, so they can come and make their pitches to you and go through their conversations with you about their requests.
Okay. Next question is, what's the impact on reaching the full PSPRS funding by the twenty-five million dollar increase in the actuarial that we have? In other words, is that, you know, we're making a twenty-five million dollar increase in actuarial contributions? Is that sort of what we anticipated when we went into this whole thing, or does that set us back in terms of time for reaching the anticipated full funding when we set up the trust?
Sure. Mayor, Councilman Kozatycz, that's a great question. So the fundamental way to think about this is, our model had assumed seventy-nine million dollars in our contribution. Because of the actual changes in terms of longevity, you know, lifespan, as well as just investment returns for the state, that number jumped to over eighty-seven million. So they gave us a contribution rate of about ninety-two percent for police, and I believe seventy-eight percent for, or seventy-two percent for fire. So those are, those numbers are significantly higher than what we had before and we built in. So what we did, just to be safe, was go through and put those numbers against our current salary amounts, and that comes out to that twenty-five million. So what it does is it in essence sets dollars aside above our required PSPRS contribution of eighty-nine million. It's about a hundred and two million, a hundred and five million. And that's by design so that we have that in our hip pocket. During the year, my expectation is we're going to challenge those assumptions that the state gave us, but what's important is we're going back with this new data and scrubbing the one-fifteen trust assumptions, the thirty-year model that you all had seen some time ago, to make sure that the assumptions that we made are still holding going forward. And so those dollars, we're going to hold on to, and we'll make a decision whether those dollars go directly to PSPRS or they go to our trust fund. And so that's a conversation that we've put in, I'll call it a placeholder for, but until we scrub that data in terms of that thirty-year But until we scrub that data in terms of that 30-year amortization schedule, I am not in a position to be able to recommend that yet.
Well, we anticipated those costs increase anyways, so this is a part of it. So, somebody seeing that shouldn't be alarmed that we were just surprised by $25 million. That was the reason we did the refund, so that we had the flexibility.
Mayor, Councilman Kazatchek, that's exactly correct. We hadn't anticipated. It just shocked us that the amount was a little more than we had expected.
Staffing and recruiting, you hit some great creative candidate pools with the veterans transitional and youth and interns. I've submitted multiple names and resumes from recently arrived refugees. And the response I get is that they can submit their resumes and enter the competitive pool. And this is an area that I would throw under the umbrella that I just mentioned a second ago as challenging, the why as to the how, because recently arrived refugees can't enter a competitive pool. They don't have a demonstrable resume. They don't have a demonstrable work history. They're refugees. But they do have the ability to come and speak face-to-face with recruiters and people in the city and demonstrate that way, some of their work skills. So, encourage us to exhibit a little more flexibility in some of the hiring that we're offering to some of those candidates. Economic development, I love all that we're doing for the small businesses and the startups and the incubator programs and all of that. What I didn't see in this is where is our effort for recruiting large, well-paying employers like the Raytheon's, like the Caterpillars, like the Hexagons? We need a mix in our economy. And that's a piece that I didn't see, and I know if Barbara Coffey was here, she'd probably be able to speak chapter and verse on it. But it was an area that if we're going to increase the area median income, we need those large, well-paying employers as a part of our economic development mix. ARPA money, we have a planned $3.2 million investment in digital literacy and access. We need to have a conversation about where that's going. Our first attempt at that did not generate a tremendous ROI. And so, before we just go off and allocate those dollars off to whoever's going to get them, we should have that conversation. Couple more comments. Some of this, one of these, some of this I made at the last meeting on transit. Every cost area within the transit operations is increasing. We are leaving $9 million roughly on the table by continuing the free fare system. And some riders can afford to invest in making it a better system. And so, I would suggest that we should be able to be creative enough to craft a fair policy that assures free rides to people who need them, and the choice riders can support the system. We also have a $14 million item that is earmarked for a June discussion. And again, this is all a part of making sure that we are creating a healthy system. And we were well on our way to doing that when we were expanding our frequent transit network and we were expanding discretionary riders, and we had the U of A at the table in the conversation. I just don't want to lose the progress that we had made. Parks, we, Mike, we have a planned reserve that's over 50%. We have a planned reserve based on your proposed budget of $16 million. That's over 50% of the general fund budget for parks. And I don't believe that that's reflective of the value that this community places in parks. Prop 407 is legitimately, we're making great investments, but that's for expanding capacity. That's for expanding our parks' capacity. It has nothing to do with operations. And the expanding capacity increases our O and M costs. And so, I would love to see us increase the general fund contribution to parks before we're done with this. Even if we put $2 million more into them, it's still only, our reserve fund is still only 50%. It's still at 50% of what our parks' investment is. And finally, environmental services, the memo really skimmed over the fact that we're dipping $20 million into the environmental services fund. And I'd like to hear a more thorough explanation of the health of Carlos's operation. And we're dipping $20 million bucks into his fund balance is a challenging one-liner out of that entire budget that I don't understand, and I think we need to hear more about that. And those are all my, oh, wait, one more, one final comment. Are we at this point to make a recommendation on the model that you're proposing for the compensation plan? You gave us four options, three, actually.
Mayor, Councilman Kazatchek, you're welcome to do that. My recommendation was the 3%. You'd asked me to come back to you. If you want to give me some guidance, I can start working on that. I can tell you that I will need direction at least by the 19th so I can prepare. My expectation is to get into the first pay period of July, you know, to make that effect. So, whenever the council is comfortable.
Interested in the rest of my colleagues' input on it. I like scenario C, the 1% plus the flat 1342. And the reason for that is because we just did a lot of work on our compression adjustments, and I would hate to see us set ourselves back. And yet, I think it does achieve the goal of helping the people at the lower end of the pay scale more than the upper end. Now, I'm done for real.
Thank you, council member, and I think it's, I would like to hear from my colleagues in terms of the compensation scenario that they favor so that by the time we come back on the 19th, we, and after everyone gives us input, including the labor groups, that we are prepared to choose which scenario is the best for our employees. Councilmember Cunningham and then Vice Mayor Santa Cruz.
A few things I want to start with. I want to start with the fiduciary fund long-term. Actually, let's back up. This budget is kind of an interesting budget in that this is our first live meeting back. It's kind of a metaphor for, a lot of the stuff we should be planning should be for like, not this year, but next year, like FY '24. Some of the things that we're going to, all the challenges that I'm perceiving is for FY '24. A lot of the things we need to be doing, we're talking about, but they really need to be FY '24. We actually need a transition year of quasi-normalcy where we're actually live and not remote. We're actually, so let's keep all that in mind. I mean, there's stuff we want to do. And, but we've been in this, kind of, the whole world's been in this kind of weird holding pattern. I mean, we haven't met live for 26 months, and here we are. So, I want to acknowledge all that before we get started. So, some of the things I'm going to say are about FY '23. Some of them are going to be about FY '24, understanding that there's some nuance there, and just I wanted to point that out before I got started. First one was on the revenue assumption. You guys are conservative this year. We're probably going to have to be even more conservative next year. I'm worried that if the market pulls back anymore, our fiduciary fund might even take a hit. I'm really concerned about that. I know that a bunch of that stuff, we sold bonds, so some of that revenue is fixed. We're not going to take that hit. But I know some of it got invested in a hedge, so I, you know? So, I want to kind of, I'd love to get a working, just a working model, probably for FY '24, but it's something we could take a look at now. Again, that billion dollars is kind of a wash in our total fund balance. But I just wanted to say, yes, we're being conservative, and that's good. But if this market, you know, there's, there's suggestions that we're looking for kind of an 18-month up and down going on when it comes to, you know, the S and P and NASDAQ and the like. So, if that's what we're facing, we probably want to be aware of that, and we can plan for it. It's not anything we can't take. I just wanted to be there. As far as the compensation plan goes, I like the hybrid idea, but the deal is, I think, to some degree, it may, you know, every year, we've gone through this process, and every year, we come with a compensation plan, and we talk to four labor groups, and dollars to donuts, not all of them agree, right? And sometimes, maybe you go with one compensation plan for one department and one conversation for another department. I don't know if that's the route we have to go either. We may have a hybrid within a hybrid, depending on what we have. But we're going to talk to the labor groups, but I guarantee you the feedback they're going to give us. I like the idea of the hybrid because it kind of helps some of the folks that are paid a little less, and we still can keep it equitable. But the bottom line is, is that we're going to run into some resistance. I can already anticipate a couple labor groups saying, no, 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 just keep the 3%. And a couple other groups saying, no, just keep the flat rate. So, I just want to let you know that we're going to have those conversations, and we're trying to make sure that everybody's heard. I want to talk really about CSP. This is probably a more '24 conversation. We're coming in at $1.8 million this year for their total budget. Ultimately, is that going to be enough for the type of social service-oriented response we want with immediacy, long-term? So, for '24, there may be some fluctuation in that budget, which also brings me to City Court. City Court is budgeted for another $2 million next year and at $10.6 million this year. I kind of like, I like the numbers of where City Court is at, but we're starting to see some discussion on how we're doing initial appearances. It seems to me, in some cases, we're getting complaints that we're keeping the wrong people and letting the, keeping the, people who are supposed to be detained are not being detained, and people who are supposed to be released are not being released. And that's, we're getting that feedback. Now, I don't know if there's anything to it. I don't actually think that it's anything procedural on our end. We're providing that service to the county and doing a good job. But it got me thinking about, perhaps, in the further partnerships with Pima County, we start thinking about having some quasi-ownership or a little more collaboration with pre-trial services and seeing whether or not that's in our '24 plan. Obviously, we're not going to talk about it this year, but we've got, we're doing a lot of initial appearance hearings and advisory hearings. That number's actually increased. We've really got to take a look at whether or not we have the adequate dollars. Oh, my gosh, I'm so happy golf made a million bucks. We can check that comment off. But we're going to be talking about some capital changes in golf long-term, and I think that there's a win-win scenario out there. I saw that we're going to do $250,000 to the ward offices and, excuse me, $250,000 to the mayor's office and $50,000 to the ward offices. I think there's a couple places here that we can probably affect some change. You know, we've talked about, Steve talked about how we do business. There's some functionality in ward offices that didn't exist. We're thinking about the city 30 years ago. The city 30 years ago was, well, gee, I'm going to call my ward office. I need to get a Ramada. What do I do? Well, hey, this is, you know, Ward 2. How you doing? Okay, you got to call Parks, and maybe you have to go over to Randolph. And then the internet got invented, and then, you know, we could transfer you, you know, right? Well, this is now 2022, the 21st century. We're 20 years in. I mean, when I was a kid, I thought I'd be Buck Rogers by now. But the bottom line is, is that maybe we can start looking at ward office personnel. You give us a little more bucks than $50,000, maybe 75, maybe 100. I don't know. But, and we start being able to be the front line, too. We can train some people, and you can call.
Councilmember, the council offices are the front line. People forget that I was a council member.
You know what I mean.
I was there. I know all the work you do.
I'm saying that I want my people to be able to say, yeah, don't worry, your water isn't going to get cut off. Or, hey, don't worry, your Ramada's rented, or, yes, we'll scan these and get these into DSD. The council offices can have that functionality. And so, if we've got a little extra budget, there's some opportunity to take that burden off of some of the folks working in departments, but also the ward offices having more understanding of what the departments do and the departments understanding what the ward offices do. And that's something that, for a long time, has needed to be done. I got City Court. I got CSP. Okay, parks. So, my question on parks was, so we're doing $30 million in parks. Is that just for O and M? Or does that include the cap improvements we're doing? I thought that was separate.
Mayor, Councilmember Cunningham, there is capital separate. There is some capital in the investment plan as well. So, $30 million is mostly operations, but there is some capital in that. But we do have capital built in the investment plan as well.
All right. So, you know what's coming next. You know where I'm coming from with parks. I mean, 30 isn't going to do it for me. So, let me talk to Ms. Hamway and see what she needs, but I think I've got some support on that one. We need parks to be first class. They need to be managed first class. And I'd really like to see us take a look. I want to be sure that how we're managing our turf, how fast we're able to replace damaged playground and sports equipment, we need to be able to respond to that faster. And it's not that we don't have a great team right now, but they need people, and we need to get it done. In response to the discussion about staffing, we can probably adopt in some departments what I call the pay-to-train model. You know, when you go into the Army, they tire you right there, and then they spend seven, eight months training you before you even have a job. Well, if we have a person who's a really good swimmer, who doesn't have their certification and their CPR, I know we do CPR classes, and I know we do lifeguard certification. So, somebody comes in and says they want to be a lifeguard, and we say, okay, go get your certification or whatever, and they go, well, maybe I don't want to do that because I need money in the next three days, and I need to start a different job, and I have another offer somewhere else or whatever. We lose that person. Well, why don't we just say, hey, look, sign up as a lifeguard. We'll get you trained in the next week, and you'll be a lifeguard. Hey, sign up as a KidCo person. We'll get you trained, and you'll be, you know? We can have an apprentice-level, an interim hire thing. When I worked at Sunnyside School District, Victor Mercado's here, nice. When I worked at Sunnyside School District, they had a model where if you did not have all your certifications in line, you got hired on an interim basis, and you had 30 to 45 days to go get your certification so you could be in. But we've got to get people, we've got to get the essential staff members we need hired as quick as possible. So, that's where I get the pay-to-train model. We will pay you to train you and then get you hired. I have something in here about the affordability crisis in housing. And what I'd say is that's more of a 2024 discussion. I think that it's going to be something that's going to come up. It's not going away. CSP, first meeting transitional, revenue assumptions, ward offices. Oh, with respect to the luring, you know, that primary job side, the business services side, we've got a couple leaves that were kind of on the leash when we went into quarantine. I remember the mayor and I met with one group that was looking at 1,200 surplus jobs right before we went into quarantine. I'd really like to get after that. And that ties in kind of to environmental services, where I think we're going to have some partners as we develop the sustainability campus, and we develop what we're going to do long-term in environmental services, where we can probably identify partners who may want to come in and help us with that. And that could lead to some bigger primary jobs. So, whether it's Kinder Morgan or Waste Management or Southwest or whoever it is, I think there'll be some opportunity with environmental services and business development. There'll probably need to be an identified person that acts as a liaison with those two as that process develops. Probably more a 2024 discussion, and so that's kind of the whole crux of this. This is going to be a transition year. We really don't know what's going to happen. This is the year of the unknown, but it'll give us a really good planning opportunity for 2024, FY '24. So, with that, those are my comments about the budget. As usual, it's a masterclass in public administration. And as usual, we have a budget that has been storted and developed well. I've got a few adjustments. Obviously, I'd like to see the ward offices, and you know I'm coming after you for parks. But at the end of the day, well done, and well done to the staff. Thank you.
Councilmember Cunningham, thank you so much. Vice Mayor Santa Cruz, and then Councilmember Lee, and then Councilmember Da.
Thank you, Mayor. Also want to express, you know, my appreciation for all the work, you know, that's been going on to this and different ways that y'all are being creative, especially around Prop 407 and finding additional monies to support some of our parks' projects. You know, that I've shared the frustration of, like, in Barrio Nopal, folks waiting for the park, and then now that the original budget will get them like two things, you know, because of inflation and the cost of materials. So, I'd much appreciate, you know, continued support on that front. I think, yeah, as we're moving towards adopting the base budget, you know, similar to what some of my colleagues have said about, you know, having a needs analysis to identify some of the gaps in services or staffing that are hindering our ability to provide services that the community expects from us, and seeing that for each department and that coming to mayor and council, you know, as part of the supplemental request of why that is needed would be really helpful. Although we also, you know, talked about a lot of the vacancies that we have, perhaps, you know, like rightsizing for what is actually needed, but then maybe seeing the other areas that we do need more staffing and more service support. And I know that that, you know, is especially, you know, we hear time and time again with Parks and Rec, with PDSD and environmental services, that always seem to be struggling and meeting service requests. I think, you know, in, in the conversation in mind, what we've been talking about is like, how do we not forget about our human resources department that, you know, we need, needs to hold a lot of this work with, with hiring, with providing support to existing employees? Just how are we thinking about, even in the supplemental, that conversation of what HR needs? I, similar to my colleague, council member Cunningham here, feel that with, you know, the cost of insurance and pay, it's important, yeah, to support the council offices to be able to also meet those needs. So increasing, increasing that budget would go a long way because there are a lot of expectations, you know, from us, whether it's through our neighborhood groups, through constituent services to doing outreach events and also, you know, the policy work, the research, the background that goes into. And then a lot of, you know, just the interdepartmental conversations. When it comes to the compensation scenarios, you know, I'm supportive of scenario B. I don't think that there is significant, that it's so significant that it would, you know, the concerns around compression, I think it's, it's minimal. But I do think that bringing up our people at the lowest range is helpful in a moment where they're the most susceptible to inflation. So somebody, you know, making on, in the $30,000 range, the cost of like milk and eggs or food, you know, going up is going to have more of an impact on that family than somebody who's making $100,000 plus. So wanted to make sure to share that at least with my colleagues and with the public. And then, you know, finally, we have, you know, been talking about transit for a while and I disagree with council member Kazachik. On, on his request, we have been talking about even at the beginning of the pandemic, how do, how did we use that moment, the federal funds, that influx of money to like rethink and reimagine the way that we provide services to the community? And so even though in that moment it was to alleviate the burden, the economic burden on our users, it was also to like reimagine how we think of public transit. And so I want us to continue to move and like doing the work of like what are still the needs? It, it is, there is a lot and a lot of the problems, the safety related problems that are being brought up or in place prior to the pandemic. A lot of these issues are happening at the transit centers and we need to continue as we're talking about our community health and wellness and safety program. We need to continue to think about like where are the areas that there, there is need in our community where we need assistance and not trying to criminalize folks, folks in need. So I think, you know, with the argument that there are people that can afford to pay, I think that public transit is, is a public service and I could argue that there are people that can afford to pay for police to respond to calls or to have fire people paying for that service, but it's a public service. It's a public need and so we do it, we pay for it with our taxes, whether it's our federal income taxes or our sales taxes, we're paying for this service. So I think we need to just rethink about how we think about our, our transit system because for decades, we've been subsidizing roads for people in private vehicles and that this is a public, this is a public transportation institution and that we should treat it as such. And that if we are going to charge anybody additional monies, I think it should be the folks who live in the suburbs and, you know, use our, use the bus system to get, you know, to work because that is a demographic that definitely can afford to pay. But that's, you know, that's where I matter. I know that we have a lot of ongoing work and we've talked about doing a study, a feasibility study and talking through all those pieces and I look forward to continuing to do that. Let me, and so the other piece with our self-funded health insurance program and the increase that we've been seeing, I know that that's going to continue, you know, to be a trend. We talked a little bit about it at the last mayor and council meeting. And so I just want to continue to share that I am interested in those like progressive solutions of like lowering the cost for quality care. And I know that you city manager have been in talks with our local providers and how we invest in our local healthcare system to provide that service to our employees and our community. And so I want to continue to affirm that strategy as we move forward. And then finally, I guess I, I had a question around our fiscal year 22, 23 and our ARPA money and if we, just like the plans for, are we going to be using the same community grant process framework? And if so, is that going to open up next, like in 2023? Or would we open that up again in fiscal year 22, 23? That concludes my remarks. Thank you, Mayor.
Did you want to address the question, council, Mr. Manager?
Mayor, what, so I've been taking notes and what I can do is when you're finished, I can go back to each one of you and, but I'm happy to do it now if you like.
All righty, whatever. How are you feeling, comfortable? Council member Lee and then council member Dahl.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, great job on the budget. A lot's already been said. I share your concern about volatility, so I appreciate that perspective. I would appreciate some additional time before we have to make a decision on compensation. I would really love to hear the wisdom of the stakeholders to inform that decision as well as thinking about a longer term approach to having some sort of a framework that we can leverage moving forward with this continual need to address cost of living adjustments and provide some sort of sustainable, predictable framework moving forward. That's all I have, Mayor.
Council member Dahl.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Manager. A wonderful presentation, so complicated of information, but presented in a way that after enough reading, I think I understand. I feel honored to be part of this budgetary process that's calling out such great new programs that we're investing in, community health, safety and wellness, housing, public safety, equity, code enforcement. Slightly disappointed, but I know why. The climate change, our climate adaptation, our climate action, which because of the leadership of the mayor and the council for many years, we are doing, wasn't called out specifically. So a question for you at the end is, I know some of these things are embedded in the budget and you can guess that maybe I will be bringing supplemental suggestions as well. Hey, I want to say ditto to my colleagues, council member Kazachik and Cunningham Parks. They need more love. They need more funding, especially pools. I was surprised to learn of how, how much repair our parks, our park aquatic systems need and it's such a necessity. You know, it's going to be a hot summer. Public pools are a lifeline for many people and it's just a necessity in this town. So would love to see some more love for that. My final question or comment or both is about the ward funding. The ward funding, you know, I'm the new guy and I was surprised that we had buckets of money to spend locally in the ward to solve problems almost immediately through departments, through funding outside help. And it's, it's been really amazing, the work that my staff and I can do with the pots of money from the ARPA, from the green infrastructure through Tucson Water and that there's this $250,000 discretionary fund from other departments that we were able to tap into. So my question is, are these going to roll over? Can we get clarification on, and I encourage them both to be in the next budget. I hope they will be renewed and it's not really connected, but yes, please and thank you. I think $100,000 more for operations per ward is, is, would be really well spent. You know, we have a billion dollar budget and we're asking for a few pennies here, but we get calls every day and if we can be helpful with, with better resources, I agree with my colleagues who's mentioned that. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Dahl. I absolutely agree with my colleagues on the council. I was there, you know, I, I served as a council member for 12 years and Mr. Ortega can, can testify to the fact that I was always bringing to his attention that, that the council colleagues and the council offices are the collectors of constituent work. And constituent work takes a lot of time. We don't have a 3-1-1 system here in the city of Tucson. These offices are the 3-1-1 service that the city of Tucson should have. But it's, it's, it's the love of where the council colleagues put their work in and that's really how we learn what the needs of the community are. So I too want to advocate for my council colleagues to be budgeted another $100,000. And by the way, we are the 33rd largest city in this country. And each and every council ward represents about 98 to 100,000 people. That is a lot of work. Some of these council offices only have about three to four employees to do all that work. So I will advocate for my council colleagues every night, every day to make sure that they have what they need to provide the services to their constituencies, constituents that they, that they deserve. Parks and Recreation, I agree with my colleagues on the council, but I don't think your, the budget and the council and your memo that you prepared to us, Mr. Ortega, really represents the investment that is going to be done for Parks and Recreation. I don't know if we're counting in that $30 million, the ARPA funds, we're not. And then in your investment plan, you're including $3 million a year for the next five years. Also, we need to think about the state shared revenue, the $20 million that you want to put in to make sure that the capital projects are going to be completed and then some, right? We also have to make sure that we're looking at federal funds that could be available to bring them in, to include Parks and Recreation. In terms of compensation, I tend to favor option B. Option or scenario A, the 3% across the board is a world of difference between someone that's making the minimum wage, which is $15 an hour, about $31,000 a year. 3%, what it means to them is about $930. 3% what it means to a person making $100,000 a year is $3,000. That is leaving people behind even more. So it's creating a bigger gap between the lowest paid employees and the highest paid employees. My favorite option is option B, only because it moves everyone up the ladder by $2,000. So even though I believe that the compensation concern could possibly be there, everyone moves up the ladder by $2,000. And, you know, I, as much as I love option B because I think it is the most fair to, to our lowest paid employees, I'm also open for option C, which is a hybrid approach, which is only a difference of about $300 between option B and option C. So it's, it's not too big of a difference between scenario, scenario B and scenario C. So I too agree that conversations should be had with labor council and our labor unions and all of our other employees. I did take the liberty to share the compensation memo with our labor groups so that they had, they had it and they, they could have enough time to give us the input from now until May 19th. And related to the rest of the, of the budget, I had a conversation with my colleague supervisor, Grijalva over on the Pima County Board of Supervisors. And I had heard the rumor that their new county administrator, John Lesher, would suggest that Pima County relieve the city of Tucson from having to pay $5 million for animal care services. I believe that that is a wonderful olive branch and a commitment to partnership from Pima County. I heard that Pima County Board of Supervisors voted to not charge us the, the $5 million. So that signifies about $5 million saving in our budget. What I would like to do to return the favor in terms of partnership and the city of Tucson wanting to work in collaboration, in partnership with the Board of Supervisors and Pima County, I would like to suggest that out of that $5 million, we dedicate 1 million of it to their childcare and daycare program and preschool program. It's called PEAPS in, in Pima County. I would like to suggest and I'm putting on the table, I don't want us to vote today, but for my colleagues to consider that we put $1 million for that after school or, or I'm sorry, childcare preschool program that Pima County has. So I'll be forwarding a memo to all of the city manager and my colleagues on the council to at least consider as we budget that continued partnership with Pima County. Other than that, I really appreciate the conversation. We still have time to continue giving advice and input to the manager and Mr. Manager, if you wanted to maybe answer some questions and, and add your closing comments on this item.
I do, Mayor. Thank you and, and thanks for the feedback. It's really helpful and it's nice to see everybody, as I mentioned earlier, but it's really nice to hear directly from you some of the things that are important. So I'm going to go back and start with Councilman Kazachik and then I'll, I'll go down the line here. So first of all, I do plan to bring back a wifi slash broadband update to you in a study session format to give you an idea of some of the opportunities that are out there. As Councilman Kazachik mentioned, you know, we, we had invested, you know, we together invested some cares money, didn't go quite like we had hoped and I think there is an opportunity now. We are getting a lot of attention from broadband providers for fiber network throughout the community. It's a great opportunity there. That was the, the crux of the memo I sent you on that. So it is my intent to bring that back. However, I do want to wait until I get an IT director on board. I think that's important to have that individual sitting here with us and strategizing. My goal was to bring it to you in June or July. I still would like to do that, but I'm a little nervous about having someone onboard that quickly. I will tell you that we get multiple calls a week from providers wanting to know when the RFI or RFP is going to go out. So that's an opportunity for us as first and foremost. With regard to the transit, I heard the conversation here and you may have noticed I was silent with my recommendations in the memo. I'm still scrubbing some of the data. There's two parts to that. One is I have built in enough for you to have some flexibility to have that conversation, but you had also asked me to reach out to the University of Arizona, to PM College, to the school districts. We have not done that. We have not finished that yet. We started that late last year, then, then our transportation director left. And so we've got to re, restart those discussions. So I want to have those discussions in hand before we start having a more robust conversation around it. And I'm not just putting you off, I'm just telling you, hey, we're on it and we'll bring that back to you here in the near future. Councilman Kazachik, of course, you'd find the one piece that is an error in the information, which is the $20 million fund balance and ES. And you had brought that up last time and shame on me because I didn't double check it. So the actual number is 16.2 million of use of fund balance. It helps, but it didn't change your question. So we'll have an answer for you on what that looks like. A big part of that investment is our cell B, 4B, I believe it is. And so what we do is on an, on an annual basis, we set aside dollars and then we have this huge expense coming out of it because we're expanding it for a cell. That's the main piece of that, but I'll bring you back a, an analysis of that so that you're able to see.
When you do that, could you also incorporate some commentary as to, we haven't increased rates and I'm not suggesting we do, but there, there must be some operational impact in Carlos's department from the three-year hiatus in our, in our touch in those rates. That, that affects that decision to pull out of his fund balance too.
Happy to do that. I, I think that's part of what I did on the slide, was just let you know, we're actually looking at that now on a, on a bigger and a broader scale. So we'll bring those back to you down the, down the road. So Councilman Cunningham, I appreciate the long-term thinking there in terms of FY24. That just tells me we got to wait until 24, then we're going to have a, a conversation. I'm kidding. So I appreciate that because I think that what it does is you're absolutely right. It gives us time, it gives us opportunity to make sure that our revenues and our expenses are going according to plan, right? It gives us opportunity to make sure that our revenues and our expenses are going according to plan, right? We all establish plans and then we have to tweak them as time goes on. So I appreciate that that train of thought. Um I would agree with you that thirty million is not enough for parks. Uh where I would suggest that rather than you having a conversation directly with uh, you know, Parks Director Hamway, we have a conversation around amongst this group to talk about the vision for that you all have for parks uh and pools. He here's the the thought process there. Um if you can convey and articulate the vision that you have for parks, then I'll implement it. We'll figure out how to get it done. And and that way, everybody has an opportunity to weigh in on what opportunities are out there for um, you know, pools, parks, recreation centers, et cetera. So I would suggest that maybe as a part of of July, Mayor, or maybe even August, we have a conversation, kind of a robust conversation, about what the vision for our parks investment. I don't disagree, and I'm not pushing back at all. But I think it's important, because the needs are so great, quite frankly, that we'll burn up a two million dollars in a nanosecond. And so what I wanna make sure is that we're investing those dollars where you all see it's important for us to do that. And all of you have a stake in this, because you all have parks in your wards and you all have at one point uh mentioned to me some of the challenges. So that'd be my suggestion on that, Mayor.
And just really quick, if you'll indulge me, where I was going with that is, is I know that every single ward's got their concerns. And we all have capital ideas in mind for parks. But we also have maintain, we have, we've got, we've got one ward where it's, we need, we're in need of it. We're in dire need of an arborist at a couple sites. We have one word where we're talking about the duck population. We're in one ward where we're getting a park that's vandalized a lot. Not that that's a problem. I mean, and I'm not trying to knock that neighborhood. You're gonna have situations where that becomes a pattern sometimes. But we need to be able to get the graffiti covered and get the the playground fixed in 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 a fast way. We just had one playground that I think burned down. And so we've gotta be able to be able to react to those things so that we don't miss a beat. Having a basket down for three weeks, we're missing a beat. And it isn't Park's fault. They they they're not at full staff, they're not at full steam, and we wanna get him there. And that's kinda where I was going with it.
Understood. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um so then Vice Mayor.
Mike, I wanna piggyback on that. Prop four oh seven dollars are great for capital expenditures. They're in, as I said earlier, they're they're increasing capacity. And as we increase capacity, it increases the operations and maintenance burden on the existing park staff. So I'm totally in agreement that with, you know, Paul and with Kevin saying that, you know, we've all got this this vision for parks. But I would argue that the existing infrastructure that parks have is being stretched really thin just in terms of maintenance and operations. So as we increase that through four oh seven, which we all support, it's gonna even more further, more further burden. I guess that's redundant, but you know what I'm saying.
Mayor, Councilman Kazachek, I know exactly what you're saying here. Uh so so let me give you a quick thought on that. Um if you remember when when you all gave direction on Prop four oh seven, we actually were directed, I believe it was you, Councilman Kazachek, that had made the motion to include a maintenance of effort component. And so we've been doing that. And so that's a piece. But I think what you're talking about is on a more robust level to make sure that the maintenance pieces are out there. I recently uh visited with Vice Mayor Santa Cruz, and we are trying to forge a partnership with a nonprofit that can help us with some of the maintenance of of parks. Again, there are pieces and components. It needs to be all hands on deck, right? And so we have to be creative on how we do that and so that we're able to fill the positions and and all the things that we talked about so that our parks are at at that higher level, we'll just say for now. Uh going back to Vice Mayor Santa Cruz, you mentioned the HR. I just wanted, and and that was, you know, kinda resonated across. So the the thought there is uh to really rethink how we hire folks, right? And we talk about, you know, Councilman Kazachik mentioned the um uh the refugees. And I know that Councilmember Cunningham mentioned, you know, some of the opportunities for potentially hiring folks ahead of time and then training them, et cetera. So think through this for a minute. And this is basically where we're headed with with some of this. And some of this is aspirational, but some of it I think we can implement, where we actually become, to some level, our own temporary uh employment agency. So for example, right now, if you need a staff person to do X, Y, Z, we can call the Temporary Employment Agency to provide that service. What we're doing is challenging ourselves to think, how can we be responsive internally so that our HR department is providing that service to those those uh receiving departments? But the other piece to it, and I think I mentioned this before, is the potential of establishing an apprentice program. Not not in the traditional apprentice language, but in a way where we can hire folks that don't have the training, and we train them. We actually hire them, we train them. You know, we we make sure that there's a commitment, right, to stick around. But we're gonna have to grow our own. We don't have a choice. And that's across the board. And so you already saw that in the CSO program for officers. You have that opportunity there going. But we need to, you know, we'll say in in a more robust fashion, make sure that we're able to, you know, deal with the service gaps, if you will, that are out there. So Councilman Santa Cruz, you also mentioned that of a transit. I think I addressed that. I'll come back with a with a more robust uh recommendation. Uh Councilman Lee, I know you you uh mentioned the compensation. No decisions necessary today. I've kinda got the the uh split uh that you all have on on the compensation approach. It's not a problem. I would suggest get comfortable with it, take your time. Um the way you can think of it is, I've set aside a pot of dollars for this. Um that nine million dollars, which by the way translates into eleven point two million for the entirety of the organization, that is already set aside. And so when you're ready, you can give me direction. I will just tell you that the sooner the better. So hopefully, maybe next meeting, only because I'd really like to start this the first part of July. I I will tell you in in um with all due respect, I would do not wanna do something retroactively, because it puts a tremendous burden on our payroll folks. So if we're gonna do it, we do it, you know, as soon as we can. But if we have to delay for you to get comfortable, that's okay. But then we will wait until maybe later in July or in August. So I'm just I'm just letting you know, and I'm being honest with you in terms of the way that I see that working out. Uh Councilman Doll, you and I talked a little bit about climate action. And uh the way that I can describe it to you, and I have examples, and we'll give you something in writing as to, you know, to show you where that is. Um but climate action is kind of an overarching goal and an overarching effort. And so it's in multiple places in the budget. Uh and I'll get you a breakdown, and you can see, you know, some of the examples. But I want you to think about the climate action, much like we think of equity, where the equity conversation and the the effort, if you will, is scattered throughout the budget as opposed to a line item. Uh but but I'll get you something in in writing on that so that you understand where you're at. With regard to the the dollars that we've allocated, uh there's two pots. One is the ARPA dollars. Uh that was three hundred thousand dollars. Uh that will be carried over if you have not expended that. For whatever reason, that'll automatically be carried over. Um the two hundred and fifty thousand per office, if you haven't expended that, it will carry those over automatically. You don't have to do anything with either one of those. Um uh my expectation is that you will want to do, and when we get our second tranche of of ARPA money, you'll wanna do another three hundred thousand. That's a decision you can make, uh but I've made the assumption you're gonna do that. I have not built in an additional two hundred and fifty thousand for you in twenty three. The reason I haven't done that is simply because I wanna see where we are with the current uh allocation. And if you run short, that's a conversation we can have, even if it's mid-year. I wouldn't worry or stress over that. Let's just, you know, work out all the all the pieces to the current two hundred and fifty. Then we can talk about what that looks like going forward. Because you're you're gonna have the three hundred from ARPA this year, potentially three hundred ARPA next year or in the future, and the existing two fifty. So that gives you eight hundred and fifty thousand there between those. And I thought it would be good to see how that how that shakes out. Um I hear you. I will bring back a recommendation for a hundred thousand per ward office. I think the piece that's important there is that it gives you flexibility in terms of not only your staffing and and all the pieces that go along with that. And and I will defend that all day long, because as the mayor mentioned, thirty third largest city. Um I've encouraged the mayor to travel and be in DC a lot, uh particularly with this administration. Gives us opportunity, uh not to get rid of her, by the way. I I don't want you to mis- misinterpret that. Uh but truly to make sure that Tucson is on the map there. And so those are those are expenses. But I also encourage you as well, is we are going down this path, you know, to not only think about your travel, but also your shoring up of of staff. If you don't have that need, because of the needs that you have in in your areas are a little different, you can carry those dollars over for projects or for things that, you know, maybe taking some of that ARPA and those other one-time dollars and putting them together to do a meaningful project in your ward. So it gives you that flexibility. Um and I encourage you to think about that. And that's why I put that in there, other than the fact that you all had had talked a little bit about it last time. Last thing I'll leave you with, Mayor, thank you for the update. I I knew that that was on the uh discussion regarding PAC in the county. Um I'm very excited about that, uh not just because of the dollars. Dollars are are really nice. But it really demonstrates an opportunity for partnership. And it's that foundational relationship, if you will, that I think is is wonderful. Um and so shout out to my counterpart, Jan Lesher, there. Um I would suggest, Mayor, I know you'd mentioned the the million dollars for the PEAPS program. Um that will be an IGA that'll have to come back to you anyway. And so that's an opportunity to to bring that back. Um and then we can start thinking about what those other opportunities are. They're built into the budget. So again, thinking about the cap, you don't have to make a decision, uh post haste on the on the other four million or the other dollars. Um Mayor, that that really concludes uh any commentary. Happy to answer any additional questions. Otherwise, we're obviously available to you. If you have uh any thoughts or comments, uh the staff and I are uh open till about six or seven every night. So we're happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega. I really appreciate the thorough conversation. Really appreciate the input and feedback from my colleagues on the council. Believe it or not, this item was scheduled for one hour, and we took two, almost two. Uh but that's okay, because I think it's healthy to have a thorough discussion uh amongst us, because we have a very limited amount of time to make decisions as we move into the end of June and approve, um have to move on things before July. But um again, I I'd like to call attention to this budget presented to Mayor and Council takes into account the uh Prop four eleven passing. If Prop four eleven does not pass, then we will have to come back to the table really quickly and decide what's going to happen with all of the uh supplemental funding that we put for public safety and for roads. So I just wanna call attention to that. Thank you for the conversation. What I'm going to do now is I'm gonna give us about five, ten-minute break. I will, I'll say ten minutes, so that we can um stretch our legs. We've been used to doing this in our office. We just turn off the camera and run, you know, to the restroom or run to get water. But since we're in person, we're gonna have to take a break, all of us. So let's take a break and come back at four and continue with the discussion. Thank you all. Dollars are really nice, but it really demonstrates an opportunity for partnership. And it's that foundational relationship, if you will, that I think is wonderful. And so shout out to my counterpart, Jan Lesher, there. I would suggest, Mayor, I know you'd mentioned the million dollars for the Peeps program. That will be an IGA that'll have to come back to you anyway. And so that's an opportunity to bring that back. And then we can start thinking about what those other opportunities are. They're built into the budget. So again, thinking about the cap, you don't have to make a decision post haste on the on the other four million or the other dollars. Mayor, that that really concludes any commentary. Happy to answer any additional questions. Otherwise, we're obviously available to you. If you have any thoughts or comments, the staff and I are open till about six or seven every night, so we're happy to answer questions. Thank you, Mr. Rodeau. I really appreciate the thorough conversation. Really appreciate the input and feedback from my colleagues on the council. Believe it or not, this item was scheduled for one hour and we took two, almost two. But that's okay, because I think it's healthy to have a thorough discussion amongst us, because we have a very limited amount of time to make decisions as we move into the end of June and approve, have to move on things before July. But again, I'd like to call attention to this budget presented to Mayor and Council takes into account the Prop 411 passing. If Prop 411 does not pass, then we will have to come back to the table really quickly and decide what's going to happen with all of the supplemental funding that we put for public safety and for roads. So just want to call attention to that. Thank you for the conversation. What I'm going to do now is I'm going to give us about five, 10-minute break. I will, I'll say 10 minutes, so that we can stretch our legs. We've been used to doing this in our office. We just turn off the camera and run, you know, to the restroom or run to get water. But since we're in person, we're going to have to take a break, all of us. So let's take a break and come back at four and continue with the discussion. Thank you all. We will continue with item five. Item five has been set aside for a discussion on becoming a Vision Zero community. Before I toss it over to Mr. Manager, I'd like to talk about the item. This is an item that I requested. As we all are painfully aware, in this community, we're killing pedestrians and cyclists, and there are much more crashes at intersections. And unfortunately, this became painfully aware to not just the city of Tucson and its residents, but also to Pima County with the tragic accident of Administrator Chuck Huckleberry. And that concern about the people that we have been losing because of the lack of safety for pedestrians and cyclists is one of the reasons why I requested that we recommit as a community to zero crashes and deaths of any more people, however they decide to travel in our community, specifically and more especially pedestrians and cyclists. It's got to stop. And I understand that this Mayor and Council has said time and time again that it is very important for us to have safe streets for all. And we have, as a matter of fact, done a lot of work. There has been tons of legwork done. Staff has done a lot of community engagement, as a matter of fact. Move Tucson was thousands and thousands of hours of engaging our community so that they could tell us what was as important for us. And so we have the data through Move Tucson and other processes that we've developed that I believe we are a community that is ready to officially become part of this Vision Zero network. And so I wanted to have this conversation with our new Department of Transportation and Mobility Director, Sam Credio, to understand how important our goals of becoming a Vision Zero community are. We've done a lot of work already. And I read the memo that was submitted to Mayor and Council in our material, and I have tons of notes. But I went to the present consideration and to the financial consideration. The present considerations is that we've already have a lot of legwork done. It sounds as though there's a pedestrian safety action plan that was put together back in 2018. As I said, we have Move Tucson, which we have thousands and thousands of hours of engaging our community. Move Tucson itself, one of our goals is to have safe streets for all, based on the input given to us by the community. And, you know, we have the tools and the staffing already in our department to get this done. One of the considerations are the financial considerations. And the financial consideration are defined by staffing and consultant support. Staffing, Sam, I will leave that decision to you, based on your needs and your assessment of your department and where your priorities are in terms of your staffing and your needs. So I will not be asking my colleagues to consider any new staffing, because I think that is a discretion of the department director. And of course, we're going to have supplemental discussions soon, so you will be ready to request what your gaps are and what your needs are. In terms of consultant support, I truly believe that that will not be necessary for this particular project. Because of what I've already explained, what we already have in terms of infrastructure and community input and plans and all of the steps that we're taking, we're actually looking, I was actually looking at all of the steps that we've already taken as a community. And it is incre, we should be incredibly proud for everything that we have in line already. A pedestrian safety action plan, a five-year safety, traffic safety plan, Traffic Safety Working Task Force, which is Tucson Police Department and Department of Transportation and Mobility. We have Identification of High Injury Network Places. We have a system-wide network screening using predictive modeling. We have a system in place to query crash data. We have public outreach and education efforts that are ongoing. We have the Safe Routes to School Education Program, which is outgoing, ongoing. So I feel that it is that we are already there, that we have the necessary infrastructure to get this done in-house and to focus on where our needs are as a community, to get to a place that we see zero crashes and zero deaths to our pedestrians and cyclists. And I have questions after your presentation. I know that you have a couple of slides to present to us and talk to us about what you feel and how you feel we can move forward with becoming a Vision Zero community. But with that, I'll just, I'll open up for you to open up the conversation, Mr. Manager. I don't know if you wanted to start, or we just go directly to our new Department of Transportation and Mobility Director, Sam Credio. Thank you, Sam.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, good afternoon, and thank you for having me. My first official presentation to you all, and I'm happy to be here. I've been talking about such an important item, such as Vision Zero. I do have just a couple of quick slides, just to summarize some of the material that's included in the Mayor and Council memorandum. Go ahead, next slide, please. There we go. So first of all, I just want to just start out with, what does Vision Zero mean? What is a Vision Zero strategy? And it's just like it sounds, Vision Zero is a nationwide strategy with the goal of eliminating fatalities as well as serious injuries among all road users within our explicit timeframe. And so what happens is communities sign up to become a Vision Zero community. And there's some minimum criteria that has been set by the Vision Zero network that I just want to run through very quickly. One of them is the mayor publicly and officially committing to Vision Zero within a set timeframe. And I think that's really important. Also, having a Vision Zero action plan or strategy either in place or in development. And we'll talk more about that on the next slide. And then having key city departments partner in helping develop that action plan or participating in the development of the action plan. And then lastly, having a Vision Zero task force that meets regularly to lead and evaluate those efforts. Now, on the slide here, there's a few graphics. The first is just looking at the traditional approach to traffic safety versus the Vision Zero approach. And, you know, calling out just a few there is traffic deaths are inevitable on the traditional side, shifting that mindset to traffic deaths are absolutely preventable. And that's really what this is about. And then looking at the map there, that just gives you a sense, and I know that those dots are pretty small, but that gives you a sense of some of the Vision Zero communities within the United States right now. Our closest Vision Zero community to Tucson is Tempe, but also in January, the city of Phoenix signed on to move forward as a Vision Zero community, and they're taking the same steps that we're talking about today. Next slide, please. And so I'll just touch on this real briefly, because the mayor did a great job talking about some of the current efforts that we've already done. We went into more detail in the material, but again, just high level, the five-year traffic safety plan actually ends this year, so we'll be updating that five-year traffic safety plan. The pedestrian safety action plan is complete. We do have an active Traffic Safety Working Task Force, which is a collaboration between Tucson Police Department and the Department of Transportation and Mobility. The identification of the high injury network, and it's specific to pedestrians, we do think there's some more work we can do there for other modes of transportation. And then rounding out some of those tasks is having a system-wide network screening process. We have a system in place to query crash data. As you know, we do have a complete streets policy. And then, as a city, we participate and lead public outreach and education efforts and also Safe Routes to School Education Program. And so that really concludes our presentation. I do have some staff with me today to help answer any questions. And with that, Mayor, I'd be happy to take questions.
I guess my first question, Sam, thank you so much for the presentation. A couple of things. The mayor needs to pass a resolution and support a Vision Zero. I am there, but I want my colleagues on the council to give me their input. I think all the steps that we need to take to become a Vision Zero community, we have, we have the infrastructure, we have the information, we have the data, we have the, including the task force, to make it happen. I wonder if our Complete Streets Coordinating Council can become part of the Vision Zero Task Force with the input of TPD and Department of Transportation and Mobility. Would that be possible?
Madam Mayor, absolutely. And that was one thing that we put as a recommendation, is that either the coordinating, the Complete Streets Coordinating Council could serve as that body, or they could potentially develop a subcommittee with the participation of TPD on there as well. And that would be our recommendation.
And part of the recommendation that other Vision Zero communities have done is that they put funds, continual funds into the, into the goals. Since we have Proposition 411 on the ballot, there's a possibility of, Mayor and Council already decided that 20% of those funds coming in would become, would be used for safe streets for all, pedestrian, bicycle, and neighborhood safety elements. Would we be able to use those funds created through Prop 411 as our commitment to Vision Zero? Would we be able to use those funds created through Prop 411 as our commitment to Vision Zero?
Yes, Mayor, that would be, uh, in terms of infrastructure improvements, that would be a commitment that we could make as, as part of our Vision Zero application to become a Vision Zero community.
And then your financial consideration, as you said, committing to approximately $150,000 for consultant services. I would ask why if we have so much of this work done already?
Yeah, Mayor, that's an excellent question. So what we did is we looked at what other communities were doing relative to becoming a Vision Zero community. Many of them, and I don't know that they have actually taken the steps we've taken, have to actually start from scratch and create a Vision Zero action plan. And that typically takes anywhere from 12 to 18 months. There's extensive public outreach that's involved in that. And so most communities we've seen actually hire a consultant to, to run that, um, run that action plan for them. Uh, as you've mentioned, we've already done, laid the groundwork there. And so perhaps it's a matter of us collecting all that information together and using it to strengthen our application.
Right, and we already al- also have a pedestrian, bicycle pedestrian safety coordinator. Do we not?
Madam Mayor, I'm still getting up to speed on our, our work chart. But yes, we do have, uh, we do have the expertise in-house for bicycle and pedestrian safety, as well as traffic safety. And, and we have our traffic engineer in the audience today to answer any questions.
I, to be honest, I, I, I think we can do this. And I'm very, very confident that, that the city of Tucson has the expertise and talent internally uh, to be able to move our Vision Zero community forward. I, I don't think, but I wanted to leave it up to your discretion. I don't think we need to start from scratch. I think we have all of this infrastructure and community engagement built in already. Um, I would prefer that we use the expertise and, and talent that we already have in our staff. That's, that's my input, but I open it up to my colleagues on the council. Councilmember Cunningham and, and Vice Mayor, and then Councilmember Lee, I think.
You know, this, you know, this is coming on my thing with consultants. And the big thing right here is that, uh, one of the reasons that I'm really apprehensive about consultants is we got AB back there, and he's one of the best. Like, so we don't, I don't know if he, whatever he needs to put this thing together the right way is fine. But, I mean, I don't really want to hire somebody to do stuff we've already done and tell us stuff we already know. I want to be really careful about that. Like, our biggest problem right now is that it's not that we don't have a plan. It's one, how to implement that plan, and two, what we're allowed to do. Um, but we are putting in traffic commings, which is in the Vision Zero framework. We're doing lighting, we're doing LED lighting, which is in the Vision Zero framework. I would say that right now, if we want to collaborate with public safety, I'd really like to get a breakdown of our pedestrian fatalities where we ambigu- we disambiguate the data a little bit, because we've got, we've got different categories of pedestrian fatalities. The first one that comes to mind is whether it happened at night or during the day. The second thing was, would be whether or not the driver was impaired or distracted or not. The third piece I'd like to know is whether or not the, whether or not the victim was in a crosswalk or was in a proper right-of-way or not. Like, there's some things I want to kind of know, like, how's our data on that? And I'm not, I don't want a victim blame, and I don't want to, uh, hammer every single driver that they don't know. But I'd really like to know how many, I'd really like to have that, this one was totally avoidable number. And I know that the delayed left turn is one of those ones. I know that that left turn when you're walking away from, and we've talked about doing some PSAs, where the, both the pedestrian and the driver are a little bit more aware. I remember right, this is how dated it goes. Dude, Kevin Sumlin was still coaching football. And we were talking about having him in an ad for that. And it was, if you're crossing a crosswalk in the same direction that they're taking a left turn, in other words, you're taking a, you're going, the traffic's, you're heading eastbound. The, 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 the person crossing the crosswalk is on the south side of the street, walking eastbound. And the person taking a left turn is heading eastbound and turning southbound. Those are, that, we talked about this two and a half years ago. I really wanted to know how many, how many of those pedestrian deaths were from that specific scenario? And the reason I brought that out is because I remember, right before we went into quarantine, we had two pedestrian deaths involving police cars, where that was the scenario. And quite frankly, it was an avoidable accident in, in both cases, except that we've got, we had, we had a driver and a, and a pedestrian not really paying attention to the whole, the whole scene situation. But I just remember those two things happened, like, and it was within about six months. And then I was, I was walking across Broadway, coming from the Freddy's over there, crossing onto the, you know where the gas light is? And I almost got hit too. And so that's, that's the one I see. I know Councilmember Kazachik crosses a lot of streets and, uh, has quite a bit of experience with that. But I really wanted to see that left turn. And I remember that Diana addressed it right away by putting in the blinking yellow and trying to change some things up. But that's one of those things where that Vision Zero is a big piece of this. So hiring a consultant to tell me that delayed left turns are dangerous, dude, we already know. So that's kind of my, my, my piece on this. Let's be careful on what kind of money we need to lay out. I'd rather lay that out for, if I've got an extra 150 grand, I want to lay that out for traffic calming. I want to lay that out for beeping, better beeping lights or hawk lights or whatever we're doing, alright?
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor, and then Councilmember Lee. And then Councilmember Dahl.
Oh, does Richard have his hand up? Okay.
Okay, can you hear me? Quick question, just if we press the, can we, does like our red light go on? Does that put us on cue too? Is there a way that we, Suzanne? No? Okay. You press the left button, and then it puts you on cue without it actually making it a hot mic?
No, that little, that little person puts you on cue. You press the little thing on the screen.
And that's what I do, okay. I didn't want to keep raising my.
No, it doesn't, Vice Mayor, your, your, your mic will be hot.
Okay, okay. All right, well, thank you. Um, and Mayor, just thank you for, um, bringing this to the, to the table and to the discussion today. I know that this, this program or this effort, you know, was, uh, been successful in places like Sweden. Um, and just want to, Antonio put some stats together that in, uh, in Stockholm, which is roughly the size of Phoenix, in 2013, um, they lost about six people to car crashes. And in Phoenix, they lost 167 in that same year. And so I know that, um, these areas are, you know, way far ahead of us when it comes to design and been thinking and working on that for a long time. And so I think also that it, that it's important, as we're shifting away from just victim blaming, um, that we're looking at like, what is our role, what is our responsibility and how we design our roadway? Um, so I think that's, that's important. And I think that in the past, the other, the other piece that's happened, that somebody who also commutes on bike or, you know, walks, that the routes that we make for people riding a bike is way out of the way. You know, so you're creating not only like more time or it being a harder, you know, um, ride, than making it direct, so that we make routes super easy for people driving a vehicle, but we make people walking their bike and go out of their way. And so I think that's part of the tension, right? When we talk about, you know, jaywalking, is like, we don't have better places for people to cross streets or better connections, and that that needs to be, we continuously have to work on that. And I think, um, there is possibilities for us to even revisit, you know, those policies around, um, jaywalking and how we're, um, thinking about that. That, uh, we still, though, have a very car-centric culture in trying to move people around as fast as possible. And that some of this tension is going to be also, you know, slowing down speeds and, and making, making sure that it's safer for everyone. Because when you're behind, um, the wheel in a piece of armor, you know, it can be used as a weapon, you know, towards other people. So how do we think about the responsibility? I don't want to completely shift the responsibility, you know, that we all have. But that's the, the tension that I see, you know, a lot in our community as we're trying to put in, you know, more complete streets. Um, there is this tension of like, well, I can't get to where I need to go as fast as possible, because they want to use all our roadways as highways. And so I think there's going to be a lot of education that we have to do with our community as well as like, like unlearning a lot of our bad behavior on the road and then like learning, relearning, you know, um, ways to, to coexist with everybody else. And so with that, I also want us to consider, you know, like the signals as we're talking about the left turns. But, um, a lot of time, the right turns are also an issue for people trying to cross the street and cars automatically feeling the light is green, I get to go. That we, we, uh, do better signaling for people who are walking and also, um, riding a bike, so that they can safely get across intersections, especially, you know, in Ward 1 in those freeway intersections that become a, a conflict point. But again, you know, thank you so much. Want to make sure that we're not paying lip service and just the possibility of being able to marry this to Prop 411 can go a long way.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Lee, and then Councilmember Dahl, and then Councilmember Fimbres.
Thank you, Mayor. As the Vice Mayor said, thank you, Mayor, for bringing this issue forward. Super critical, and I know that we want to make sure that you guys have the resources you need to get this done. Um, I'm just curious, I've heard the concerns about the consultant piece. I'm just purely curious from either of you, is, is the consultant piece a function of additional resource to get this done correctly? And also, if, if you didn't have access to those resources, is there anything you'd have to take off of your plate as a department to move this on to the plate as a priority?
Mayor, Councilmember Lee, let me, let me answer that. First and foremost, this memo and these recommendations were written before Mr. Credio was actually the director. So they predate him a little bit. What I'd like is a little bit of, of pause on that issue. Um, I, I hear you, I understand. I'm not going to be, uh, jumping up and down about the use of a consultant. I think to your point, how can we get it done? And what does it mean in terms of the, I'll use the term burden, onto the existing staff capacity? At this point, I think that, that we've got ideas. We've, uh, the Director, Credio and I have spoken on a couple of different things we can do. So we'll, we'll go down that path first. Um, and I will tell you that if I need to bring somebody in for help, I'll let you know, and we'll, we'll go down that path. But, but the message is loud and clear. I mean, it, it, we're not going to hire someone to tell us what we already know. I mean, it's really about coming back with those fundamental recommendations. Keep it in mind, I think, as the Vice Mayor mentioned, this does have a component where Prop 411 can truly be, uh, you know, an asset, if you will, in terms of how we approach that. So again, I, I appreciate all the comments. We, we take that, and we won't be hiring a consultant. We'll figure out a way to get it done within the capacity we have. If we don't, we can't, then we'll come back and let you know.
Councilmember Dahl, and then Councilmember Fimbres.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a great program. Congratulations on your first presentation, Mr. Credio. Um, I'm completely supportive of it. There's one small part that stuck out for me, which was the Safe Routes to Schools component. I understand that that's a grant-funded program, and, and thank you for answering my questions, Mr. Credio, so quickly. Within several hours, I got answers from this man. The money's going to run out. I just want to encourage that we find sources to continue the program. Thank you.
Councilmember Fimbres.
Thank you. And I, Sam, I want to congratulate you on putting this thing together. I know it's been a while, but we've been working on it for a while. There are other partners out there without worrying about consultants. You have NHTSA, ADOT, GOHS, PAG, RTA. Another, going to be partners in this thing, also the same route to schools community. The TPD is another one. Prevention, education and enforcement are the three components we have to change people's behaviors. It's critical that we use it. Sam? I know there's federal grants out there, I know there's state grants out there to GOHS and ADOT, and also to NHTSA, you could tap into, also to help with consultants. Are you guys looking into that?
Mayor, Councilmember Fimbres, that is definitely something we'll look into. Um, we've already started to dive into some of the federal grant opportunities that are going to be made available later this month. And so we are evaluating all options on how to bring funding in to support this program and, and others that we have on the works.
I agree, we need to look at the number of fatalities and injuries that have occurred because of the issues right now with pedestrian fatalities and injuries. Give some numbers, I'd like to see what it's, try stress areas we are. I know Tom Stel- Tim Steller wrote an article about photo enforcement also. I don't know what we have to do, what kind of methods we have to look at that, but I don't know if we want to produce that or not now. Just thank you for your work and your efforts. Welcome aboard.
Councilmember Kazachik.
Thank you. Uh, also welcome aboard, Sam. I agree that, uh, we have the Complete Streets Coordinating Council, a component of which are both our pedestrian and bicycle advisory committees, uh, that really could serve as the crux of the otherwise consultant to go outside. I think that if we were to hire a consultant, it would be a slap in the face to the people that we've got in this community who really invested a lot of their volunteer time for literally years studying this issue. And so I think that, you know, to, to go outside and hire somebody to come in and, and counsel that group, uh, I think we'd, I think it would be a disservice to the groups that we've already got in place that are actually doing that work. I also want to support the notion that the Vice Mayor mentioned, and that is that this just not be an aspirational document or effort, that it's actually, that it is actionable. There are things that we, we can do that are actionable right now. Paul mentioned, uh, speed mitigation. Uh, our $500 Speed Hump Program is a, is a great program. We're out of them by the, by the time the July 1st hits. And I really want to challenge DTM to, uh, check that $5,000 base cost, because as that comes down, we might be able to do more of these things. Also, state law requires that we show a special condition when we drop speed limits, and we did that with the bike boulevards, uh, when we dropped them at 20 miles an hour, because the special condition was more bicycle riders. Um, I've long believed that simply demonstrate, being able to demonstrating an increased number of fatalities is a special condition we ought to be able to use locally to, to decrease, uh, speed limits. But having failed with that, um, I would say that, again, as Lain mentioned, we've got this Complete Streets policy going. And as we build amenities that are consistent with the Complete Streets model, we're necessarily encouraging different modes of transportation on those, on those, uh, on those streets and roadways. And we ought to be able to use the same argument that we used on the bike boulevards for Complete Streets streets to lower speed limits, even if only at night. But I think that is something that I'm, you know, who knows what the legislature, state legislature would do, but let's try it. You know, let's, let's, uh, let's start, you know, taking the approach that, uh, we know the data demonstrates that the faster you're going, the more, uh, the more severe the injuries are, if not fatal. And, uh, there's a significant difference between dropping from 35 to 30 miles an hour, for instance. In addition to that, I believe that instituting Protected Left is a design policy for major intersections is something that we ought to be, uh, doing on a regular basis. Again, uh, this is, you know, a lot, a lot of us on the council are pretty data-driven, and the data demonstrates very clearly that, uh, major intersections with dual left-hand turns, uh, on an arrow, if it's a Protected Left, especially where you've got multiple different kinds of, uh, traffic, pedestrians, bicycles, the turn, the oncoming traffic, uh, that that's just a safer way to manage intersections. We also have right now an opportunity, as we are close to opening up Broadway, uh, to revisit the conversation that we had with the RTA and, and, um, the county about dedicating the outer lanes, east and westbound, to dedicated transit lanes. That's something that we raised the issue of five years ago. When we started that project, they pushed back on us. But I think that it's a new day, a new time, and let's, let's revisit that conversation. If you have dedicated transit lanes, it serves multiple purposes. And I think they're all consistent with the Vision Zero idea that we're talking about now. So those are some actionable things that we can do. We don't have to wait on, um, the, the Complete Streets Council or whoever we wind up, um, delegating this to. You know, and it's, 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 uh... You know, and it's, 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 uh, we, we all know the data, we all see the numbers and they're troubling. And I think I commend Mayor for bringing this forward for something that we can do. And I'm looking forward to working with you and all your staff on, on pulling this thing together.
So I'd like to have my colleagues on the council consider a motion to direct staff to develop a draft Vision Zero action plan and return to Mayor and Council. I don't want to attach number of days. I think that, that I want to leave it flexible, Sam, to you to bring it back whenever you've done your assessment, you look at all of the, you know, complete picture and, and bring it back to us whenever you have a draft recommendation. But I'd like to invite the Vice Mayor to also add a little bit of, of detail to the direction in terms of, of the motion.
Thank you, Mayor. So with that, I move to direct staff to return to Mayor and Council with the strategy to pursue becoming a Vision Zero community. That includes the following, a systems-based approach focused on the built environment that takes into account existing plans, programs and policies that influence behavior, an assessment of the Vision Zero action plans that exist in other cities, and a priority on equity when targeting areas of need for infrastructure investment to improve safety for all modes of travel.
Second. So there's a motion and a second. Any additional comments? If none, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes. Thank you all so much, thank you so much, Sam. Moving on to item six. Item six is a state and national legislation update. Are there any state and national legislative, legislation or regional committee issues for discussion? Mr. Greenhill.
Hi, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I provided some information on federal and state updates, both in the Friday IGR update as well as in response to some questions from Councilmember Fimbres this morning. I do have one bill for Mayor and Council consideration today. This is House Bill 2481. This is a bill, it actually follows a little bit from the previous discussion. There's an amendment being proposed to what is otherwise a fine bill, but it would compromise some local authority over our major arterials. It's in response to an issue up in the Phoenix area that the, the Truckers Association is pushing this bill. But it is a bill that would impact all Arizona cities and towns, and we believe Tucson as well. Mayor, IGR recommends opposition to the bill. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you need a motion?
I would, Mayor, thank you.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any additional discussion on this? Motion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Is this, is this the one that you gave us that we're talking?
Uh, Mayor, Council, yes, it is. And it's funny, I was talking to Mr. Rankin earlier. The underlying bill is fine. It has to do, the underlying bill has to do with licensing for other, ADOT. It even involves like hot air balloons, right? The underlying bill was fine. The problem is that there's an amendment being introduced onto this bill. And that's the issue that I've, I've been talking about. It's an amendment that would require local governments to go through a pretty arduous process to have to prove why we might want to limit commercial traffic on a certain major arterial.
So it's a preemption bill?
It is absolutely a preemption bill, Your Honor.
Okay. Anything else? All right, all those in favor of the motion to oppose and signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against? Motion passes. Any other updates?
No, Your Honor.
All righty. Thank you so much, really appreciate it, Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We move on to item seven. Does anyone have any items to remove from the consent agenda? Ms. Clerk?
Madam Mayor. Did you have a May 10 hearing?
Councilmember Fimbres.
Mike Reckon explaining? Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The 7E, the vote, is that going to be okay? Anyone else? Mr. Rankin?
To consider, to consider right now. Do you have a question, Councilmember Fimbres?
I just said, yes, to consider it. Is it, is there an issue with it now?
Madam Mayor, members of the council. Councilmember Fimbres, no, it's appropriate to leave 7E on the consent agenda. This allows for the compensation recommendation to move forward and sets the stage for the mayor's hearing for any disputes through the process that's required under our code and charter.
Thank you, Michael. That's all I needed to know.
Thank you, Councilmember Fimbres. Suzanne?
Your Honor, we are also requesting to remove item 7B to have it considered separately.
All right, thank you. Any others? Councilmember Santa Cruz, I don't know, I mean, Vice Mayor, do you have, I think you have your mic on. Okay, I was just wondering if you have your hand up. Okay. All righty, we move on to item eight, future agenda. Does anyone have any items for future agendas?
Yeah, I just passed out a memo for how we're going to use, proposing to use our award six excess dollars this year.
All righty, and this is a consent agenda item requested for June 7th. Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor.
Yes.
I know Councilmember Kazachik requested that item. I would suggest that if any of you are in the same boat, maybe we could all do it together. June 7th, I think, is the requested date. So if any of the council offices have that similar request, bring them all together and we'll, we'll, that way you all can address them before the end of the fiscal year. Thank you, Mayor.
Excellent. Hearing none more, then study session is adjourned. The regular session will begin at 5:30. And the next study session meeting will be Thursday, May 19th. Thank you all, we have a little bit of time to stretch our legs and come back at 5:30. Thank you.